2022, it is 6:00 PM. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A. Section 403 B 2D and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted May 3rd, 2022. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 847-252-00017 and password 494-924 via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmain.org under email City Department, City Council. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Join me in a moment of silence, please. Roll call. Counselor Termath.
Present.
Counselor Brink.
Present.
Counselor Martel.
Present.
Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
And I'm Anne Marie Mastrochio. I'm the mayor of the City of Sanford, and this evening we're joined by the city manager, Stephen Buck, and Larissa Ricketts, the city manager's executive assistant. First item on the agenda are the minutes, 22-399-01. Order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. And I'll ask for a motion to approve with a minor amendment that, under Counselor Comments, it should reflect that I am going to be running for House District 142, not 42. So can I have a motion to approve as amended? Counselor Brink.
So moved.
Is there a second? Counselor Martel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? All those in favor, show of hands. That is unanimous vote. 22-400-01. Order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Hanselman.
Still move, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Martel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands.
My husband is a US Navy.
That is unanimous. That's somebody on Zoom, so mute them. She's a Zoom queen over here. She can mute them all, right? Thank you. Appreciate that. Mayor's report, city council subcommittee reports. And I will, as soon as I find this, I will apologize right up front. It is a little long, but I will try to get through it quickly. First, I'll start with the subcommittee reports. Municipal Operations and Property Subcommittee met. DPW Director Matt Hill is recommending an interior and exterior lighting upgrade at the highway facility on School Street, as well as at the transfer station, and is proposing to have the work done by Affinity, the same company that we recently hired to maintain the city's LED streetlights. While the lighting upgrade was not budgeted, savings and salaries from unfilled positions in the department could cover the cost. There are still issues with streetlights that have been non-functioning for a long time, and Affinity has not addressed the problem to our satisfaction. A meeting has been scheduled with the company, and we expect some answers before we proceed with any lighting upgrade proposal with Affinity. A recommendation to upgrade the Public Works Department's security system was presented. The current system is old and doesn't cover the entire property. Recently, a catalytic converter was stolen from one of the city's trucks out of sight of any cameras. City manager said he wants to be sure all of the city's security cameras can be integrated and monitored remotely with one citywide system. They will gather more information before presenting a request to the full council. The light paving projects that are being funded through DPW budget savings are beginning this week. The streets will be paved. Please don't take the baby away. It's okay. I am totally fine with it. I love the cries of babies. The streets that will be paved are School Street from Washington to Rushton, both ends of Rushton Street, High Street from Washington to Emory, Pioneer Ave. from Washington to Emory, Beulah Street, and Hanson Ridge Road from Lebanon to Douglas. This light paving will get these roads through the next three to five years until they can be scheduled for full reconstruction. And I think there was a lot on social media about the fact that there are paving/parking restrictions, and that's a good sign. The subcommittee also reviewed a proposal from Beta Group Inc. to survey Sanford's roads and update the pavement management program. This was last done five years ago. The proposal included two different quotes, one by an automated system and one to be done manually. The city manager recommends the automated version and said the survey would be money well spent, as we could make better informed decisions about where to spend taxpayer dollars. The status of the West Side Village Road construction project was discussed. Burwick Avenue reconstruction began last week, and Leveque excavation is handling this project. It should be complete by mid-October. Actually, the work that I've been seeing looks like they're going to be done a whole lot sooner than that, but maybe that's wishful thinking, but they are really working hard. Various issues with homeowners on Shaw and Twombly were brought up, and subcommittee members were assured that all these issues will be addressed. Public safety. I sat in for Counselor Hanselman on the Public Safety Subcommittee and will be reporting in her place this evening. The first item on the agenda was consideration of a request to add deer crossing warning signs to Railroad Avenue. Since that half-mile stretch of road has four speed advisory signs already, it was decided that additional sign would not slow traffic down appreciably, and the request was denied. Speed enforcement is continuing, utilizing a sign that simply displays the speed at which someone is traveling. DPW Deputy Director Pete Smith has been moving it around to various locations in town. Traffic Officer Rick Buckland has doubled the department's number of traffic stops since June 21st. He has issued mostly warnings, but also a number of tickets, and has addressed speed complaints as they come in through the online reporting system. On September 1st, Officer Andrew Raymond will take over traffic enforcement duties as part of a planned rotation. DC Small said having the traffic officer has significantly decreased motor vehicle accidents in Sanford. And I asked about the School Street Route 4 intersection that recently was the scene of a fatal accident, and verified that this intersection is scheduled to be reconstructed with turn lanes and a full signal, but not until the 2023/24 road construction season. Deputy Chief Small reported that a decision has been made to turn in the five PD support vehicles that the department leases and get new ones, rather than buying out the leases and then being faced with increasing maintenance costs in a few years. Used vehicles are selling well right now, and we will be able to get six new cars to replace the five, which will help with the department's vehicle shortage, and the cars will be Kia K5s. The department has made an offer of employment to an experienced social worker who it is hoped will soon join the mental health unit. The Subcommittee also welcomed Kathryn Mabel Laird, a Springvale resident and US Navy veteran, who will be interning with the Police Department with Police Department Chaplain Jackie Thornton. Ms. Laird is in the ordination process with the United Church of Christ, and it will be great to have her on board. Chief Anderson added that he has been approached by a Hussin College student who would like to intern with the department, doing a statistical analysis of the mental health unit and traffic enforcement, which would help measure the effectiveness of these programs. If approved by the college, as expected, the student will work with the Sanford Police Department for the fall semester. Detective Eric Ray has been assigned to assist the FBI in the Safe Streets Initiative, a task force that focuses on drug-related street gang and violent crime problems. Detective Ray is the York County representative on the task force, and he has been supplied with a brand-new Chevy Tahoe that will double as his detective vehicle. Lucky guy. Detective Everett Allen ran a training course certifying several Sanford officers in ATV operation. The department is awaiting delivery of a side-by-side to use in patrolling the trails. And Detective Allen was at the National Computer Forensic Institute in Alabama last week, learning about cellphone forensic investigations. This federally funded training includes his travel expenses. The International Woolen Mill and the surrounding mill yard has turned into a dump site with trash everywhere. Detective Colleen Adams reported that there is a person apparently living in their van there, but the windows are covered with black bubble wrap, so they can't be seen. The city's parking ordinance requires officers to observe a person sleeping in the vehicle to ticket them. The van is unregistered, so they have been given 10 days' notice or it will be towed. The city manager said city employees cannot legally enter the property to clean it up unless it goes through the dangerous and hazardous process. He will ask the city's attorneys if cleanup can be done, as long as it doesn't disturb the surface of the ground, and notify codes to issue notices of violation to start the process. The final item for discussion concerned problems that residents of Tanguay Street have been experiencing since the street name was changed. The city did everything we were supposed to, but the reliance by FedEx, UPS, and other companies on Google Maps seems to be the overarching problem. Google has not updated its information despite repeated notifications by city departments. There were a few property owners who had not changed the numbers on their houses, which was also causing confusion with deliveries, and those people have been issued notices of violation. The Fire Station Feasibility Working Group traveled to Brunswick to look at their new fire station. We will schedule at least one more field trip to view the new public safety building in Wells before our meeting in December. And I have one final thing. Chase Fromweller is in Seattle, Washington, undergoing cancer treatment. His mom posted his address on social media, suggesting a shower of mail and good wishes from his community might help to lift his spirits. His address is Chase Fromweller, room number 374-5130, 40th Avenue Northeast, Seattle, Washington, 98105. Let's see if we can overwhelm the postal service in Seattle. That's all I have this evening. City manager's report is next.
Thank you. I have several topics to discuss this evening. The first is the RAISE grant. On Monday, August 8th, Senator Collins announced and personally called to relay the tremendous news that the City of Sanford has been awarded a RAISE grant in the amount of $25 million for the Village Partnership Initiative in partnership with the Maine Department of Transportation. The total project is estimated to be $34 to $35 million in total. The successful award of the RAISE grant was an application to the Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Program to help urban and rural communities move forward on projects that modernize roads, bridges, transit, rail ports, and other transportation infrastructure to make the system safer, more accessible, more affordable, and more sustainable. As your manager, I see the RAISE grant award as a primary example of citywide planning and council-supported with investments made in our capital program that first culminated in the Planning Partnership Initiative with the Maine Department of Transportation. The successful completion of the PPI and multiple municipal partnership initiatives with Maine Department of Transportation led to the ability of the city to again partner with MDOT with their support to put forward the RAISE grant. The grant application also represents our city's prime initiative to be a best public-public or public-private partner to amplify our capacities and funding to achieve the city's vision. City worked with MDOT towards the development of the Village Partnership Initiative, Sanford being the first to apply under such, to further strengthen the objectives within the RAISE initiatives and to combine the city's fiscal resources with those of the states as matching funds for the $25 million grant. I'd like to recognize the city council for their input and support of the planning process starting as early as 2018 for the city's capital program, followed by support of the Planning Partnership Agreement and subsequent partnership initiatives to finally supporting the RAISE grant application itself. I'd like to further recognize the leadership and contribution of Public Works Director Matthew Hill for the initial PPI, as well as for his working partnership with the Maine Department of Transportation as being instrumental in the successful award of this grant. During the development of the PPI and again in developing the RAISE grant application, there was not a single department of the city that did not contribute to the information needed to hit all of the requirements of the grant. If not for the many unique initiatives and the qualities of our city, such as Sanford Net Fiber and our pre-planning, we would not have been successfully competitive to achieve the award. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to extend a debt of gratitude to Senator Collins for her support of the city's application. Senator Collins, as ranking member of the Transportation Appropriations Subcommittee, has now secured more than $850 million in competitive transportation grants for Maine, Sanford being one of the latest that the senator lent her support. The senator's staff was also very supportive and impactful in the assemblage of the RAISE grant. But I feel the need to tell on myself here. So last Monday morning, I had a series of meetings scheduled for the entire morning. I was in the conference room in the early morning meeting, somewhere between 8:00 and 9:00. My phone rings for the first time. It's a number that I don't recognize. I swipe the phone, put it back on my hip. Couple minutes later, cellphone rings again. Look at it. It says restricted. I swipe the phone. Three to five minutes later, the phone rings again. It says restricted. I swipe the phone. My wife calls. We have a rule that she doesn't call during the business hours, but if it's an emergency, she can call, right? So I step out of the room. She says, "You need to answer your phone. The senator is calling you." So I have a very nice voicemail from Senator Collins congratulating us for the grant. So I have since apologized, and I'll write the senator a nice letter to that extent as well. So, all right, so back to the RAISE grant. I won't go into the whole scope. There's a map in my report. There's a full description that we put out in the press release as well. We were interviewed. Three different TV stations have picked this up, three newspapers, Main Biz, so we got very good coverage. And in fact, I was in the woods of Millinocket on Saturday with a weed whacker, and I get tapped on the shoulder, taking my hearing protection off, and they go, "Congratulations on that money thing that you just got." So good penetration of our city being awarded. So also in the transportation aspect, we're using the momentum that we currently have with the RAISE grant. We have applied, we have a draft application now under the SS4A grant. That is a Safe Streets for All. The SS4A grant is the Safe Streets and Roads for All grant that is funded through the American Infrastructure Bill to the tune of $6 billion. There's $1 billion available for this year. Our draft application is for an action plan in the minimum amount of $200,000, with the city being 20% of that amount. The action plan will further identify traffic, bike, and pedestrian impediments in our city. The city can then make an application to the SS4A program for funding for any of those projects, anywhere from $200,000 to $50 million, to address the safety projects identified within our action plan, all federal dollars with a 20% local match. We feel that we know we'll be very competitive in this category, and also that there's not many municipalities that will apply towards this, other than the larger cities that have the technical capacity to administer the federal funds absent the Departments of Transportation. Number 1 Pond Tree Removal. We have again applied to the Department of Environmental Protection for a permit by rule for the removal of the vegetative and tree growth within the waterway of the Malsum River below the dam at Number 1 Pond. It's the same process that we used about eight years ago during the construction of Gateway Park and making those improvements to the retainer wall in that area. Once permitted, the city will use a local contractor for the removal pursuant to the permit. I also had in my fire station notes here, the working group did tour the station in Brunswick. It's very important because it's the same consultant, Bob Mitchell, that the city has under contract, as well as the same architectural and engineering firm for WBRC. We also found that the Brunswick station is of similar design and configuration as Sanford is currently proposing for a central station, although theirs is obviously configured differently because ours will be dependent upon the landmass that we ultimately be able to put the central station on. But I do think that the tour provided great insight into configurations, features, and the relationship of the hot, warm, and cold zones, and also contained a majority of the facility features that we're seeking to have in our central station. The working group has another scheduled tour in Wells, and we're currently looking at both Scarborough and South Portland as well for a third tour to achieve that before the working group's next committee meeting. 2022 tax bills. The assessment and the split tax bills will be finalized this week. They're actually finalized today, and I believe IS confirmed that the files are secure. The assessor indicates that the vision files are complete. The IS department has certified those, and the batch has been sent to our printer. If all goes well, the bills will go out on Friday. That is the same timing as in prior years with no delay, meaning that the first installment will be due September 15th and the 2nd of this year and March 15th of 2023. The tax insert sheets were sent to the printer last week in preparation for inclusion with this year's tax bill, so there'll be four pages of information inserted within the tax bill. Even before the inserts are out, the assessor's office indicates that a large portion of eligible homeowners 65 and older with a 10-year homestead property qualification have already filed under the state's newest program, the Property Tax Stabilization for Seniors. It indicated he has a large mass of applications already. So I would encourage our residents, when you get your tax bills, there's four pages of information in there. One of those pages is specifically dedicated just to property tax relief programs. Please review that to make sure that you have your homestead exemption and other qualifying elements in there to reduce your property tax liability. Also, we have notification of the state law that was passed for the reimbursement of the time in developing and adapting ordinances to the opting-in to Maine's adult-use cannabis program. They will reimburse us up to $20,000 for the work that the city's done over a number of years now. We can go back three years' worth of time, so I'm going to be asking codes, planning, and other departments that contributed to that to go back and backtrack their time, which we will reasonably file to the Office of Cannabis Policy. Operational hours, as so approved by the city council at the last meeting, the city hall operational hours will change to a Monday through Thursday, 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, to do a compressed work week here with no forward-facing office hours on Fridays. I have met with all departments, and we've cleared plans for how that could change potentially the office hours that are allowed to change. I've also met with AFSMI General Services, which is the union representing the support service positions. We have an agreed memorandum of understanding in place. That's been signed by the union rep and myself today. And there, excuse me, Sylvia Hebert will sign that tomorrow, and we'll have that in place. Communications is disseminated by social media platforms, news articles. We are going to purchase a banner in the Sanford-Springvale News to go on the front page for a couple of weeks, and subsequently we'll have one six-page ads in there for six to eight weeks after that fact to continue to inform the public. We have it out on the MyRec platform. We have it in the tax inserts. We have it on WSSRTV, as well as the website, and it's been posted on the city hall's electronic bulletin board outside. And then the last element I have in here is the Community Enterprise Grant. The city has received notice from the Maine Department of Community and Economic Development that we have been awarded a $100,000 facade grant improvement. So we had four business applications in there. It's been so long and forthcoming that we will have to revisit each of those potential applicants to see if they're still interested. It was the former Appliance Pro, the former Versionon Shoe Building, Shaw's Hardware, and the former 7-Eleven at the corner of Maine and Winter. So our small-business advocate, Mary Hastings, will work with each of these property owners to see if they still have interest in the facade improvement program. If not, we will move forward with other businesses in the downtown impacted area. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I skipped some other subcommittee reports, which I should have taken care of, so I think there were two other subcommittees that met, and Counselor Stackpole is going to report on both of those. Was that correct?
Yep. Yep. So the zoning committee met last Tuesday, along with the Solid Waste Subcommittee. Very briefly, on the zoning Subcommittee, we approved an amendment to the front yard setback in private waste standards in the urban zone. This will, moving forward, will allow us to have more room for pedestrians and pedestrian moving about, travel in the future. And on the Solid Waste Subcommittee, we had four items on the agenda. Couple of, from my perspective, as a member of the Solid Waste Committee, exciting things. We received an update on the solid waste grant reduction award, which is, we do have or had some individuals reviewing what was in recycle bins, and if they saw things that were in a recycle bin that didn't belong there, they were putting a little tag or note on the recycle bin. This is an education piece. I like education, and I think so far it's been effective. We also did an update on the curbside single-sort tagging program. Actually, I got this backwards, didn't I? The solid waste reduction grant award has to do with us contracting on a voluntary basis for garbage, basically, compost garbage. People that want to participate in that will be able to do that at a reduced rate, and they get a bucket, and they can put their garbage in the bucket, and someone will come by on a weekly basis and pick it up. This is a pilot program. It's on a volunteer basis, as I said, so if you want to participate, there'll be more information that's coming out. And then the curbside single-sort tagging program is what I just explained about people reviewing and educating people as to what's going into their recycle bin. We're also updated on the potential that there are some manpower issues, because there's manpower issues everywhere with Casella, our waste management person. They're the ones that come around and pick up the municipal solid waste. And they're being closed on certain days, and this was a mystery at that time, why they were closed. And what happens is, when they're closed, the waste goes to EcoMaine, which has a higher rate that they charge than our contracted rate with Casella. So there's some potential budget impact, but nothing significant at this point, but something we want to be aware of. And then there was a discussion of the change in the transfer station hours, and I believe we're moving ahead with that, and that information, I think, has been on Facebook and other areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Okay. Communications presentations, 22-398-01. Swearing in of Lieutenant Paramedic Jarrett C. Clark and Assistant Chief of Operations Richard S. Smith of the Sanford Fire Department. Chief Benati, you're going to handle this?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the rest of the city council. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight and do what we have not done for a while, and that's a swearing in in city hall chambers. Anything that we've had over the last couple of years within the Fire Department due to the pandemic has been done in-house. So it's a real pleasure to be here again tonight to bring these two fine gentlemen forward. So without further ado, I'd like to start with Jarrett Clark, and just give a little description before I call him forward. Lieutenant Paramedic Jarrett Clark. Jarrett is here tonight with his wife Melinda and family and friends, and Jarrett was hired by the Sanford Fire Department back in August of 2015. Jarrett has been a strong member of this department for the last nine years, and has worked hard to establish himself with education, training, and experience on many different platforms, which has now attained him the rank of lieutenant, having established himself above other candidates from across the department. Jarrett has gained experience in this department, but has been active in other departments as well, and through volunteer and call status in the surrounding towns. Jarrett has the following credentials to his name. He is a firefighter 1 and 2, which he attained from Southern Maine Community College. He is a fire officer 1 and 2, which he attained through the Alabama Fire College. He's certified in hazmat ops, and he has multiple trainings in ICS and National Fire Academy courses to his credit, and has gained the reputation of being able to work with anyone, as well as able to relate to anyone in the public in a strong, positive way. Jarrett is one of those faces that he's able to relate to a lot of the people that they meet in the street when they're helping, and he has a rapport with patients like many don't have sometimes. Jarrett was also an Eagle Scout when he was a teenager, which says a lot about his positive attributes and character today. And also, on a personal note, Jarrett is a fine young man to work with, and he is also a homegrown person coming from this area. So without further ado, I will ask that Jarrett and Melinda come forward for the swearing in, as well as Sue Cody, who will perform the oath.
Do you, Jarrett C. Clark, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and obey the laws of the United States and of the State of Maine, and that you will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter, ordinances of the City of Sanford, statutes of the State of Maine, and faithfully discharge the duties as lieutenant and paramedic for the City of Sanford Fire Department?
I do.
Do this one. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Secondly, tonight, I'd like to bring up the new Assistant Chief of Operations, Rick Smith. Rick is here tonight with his wife Melissa and new baby, who you heard earlier, Millie, her thing, and family and friends as well.
I'll hold the baby.
Rick's looking for daycare sometimes, I think, so. Rick was hired by the Sanford Fire Department in June of 2009. Rick has been a valuable member of the department for the last 13 years, and has worked hard to establish himself with education, training, and experience on different platforms, which attained him the rank of lieutenant, and now the rank of Assistant Chief, having established himself above other candidates from across the country. Rick not only has experience in this department, but has also been the chief of the act and fire department for the last couple of years, as well as taking classes in his master's degree, and is the state director for strongman competitions throughout the state, at which he has also competed, competed in the strongman competitions around the country as well. I'll let Rick explain what strongman is to those who don't know it, but it's much what it is, or as it's described. Rick has the following credentials to his name. He has an associate's degree in fire science from Southern Maine Community College, and he graduated from NCTI in, with a paramedic certificate as well. He has a Bachelor of Science in Applied Technical Leadership from the University of Southern Maine, and is currently working on his master's degree from Columbia Southern University. Rick has firefighter one and two. He's also certified as a fire officer one and two, a fire instructor one and two. He holds a PIF certification for ambulance transports. He is an EMS instructor coordinator, and he's also a National Fire Academy Certified Incident Safety Officer. He has multiple trainings in ICS and National Fire Academy courses to his credit. He has also had training in confined space rescue, as well as other trainings. Rick has helped educate many of the new firefighters in the county through fire tax schools and the Sanford Regional Vo-Tech Program at Sanford High School by being an adjunct instructor there as well for a number of years now. With that all being said, I'd like to ask Rick, and tonight it's going to be his dad, who you all look as a familiar face, Harold, to come forward for the swearing in and the penning.
Please raise your right hand, Richard. Do you, Richard Smith, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and obey the laws of the United States and of the State of Maine, and that you will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter, ordinances of the City of Sanford, and statutes of the State of Maine, and faithfully discharge the duties as Assistant Chief of Operations for the City of Sanford Fire Department?
It's truly been my honor to present these two young men here today. They will do great things for the City of Sanford. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Benati. Really appreciate it. I just want to say congratulations to Lieutenant Clark and Assistant Chief Smith, and to all the families. I see that moms and dads and in the audience, and congratulations to everyone. We're really lucky to have you all here. And what a beautiful sight to see all of you here this evening. I'm just happy that we can do it in person. So, welcome. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say? But here's, yeah, congratulations. And thanks to all the kids who sat here and waited through all the boring stuff that came first. All right. Thank you all. Just going to give everybody a chance to move out before we start. On the boring part of the meeting. Okay, public participation for items that are not on this evening's agenda. Is there anybody either on Zoom or here who wants to speak on something that is not on the agenda? You can show your hand if you want. And somebody else has their hand up? Okay, but I, all right. Lance, Lance, I think your item is on the agenda?
Okay. I wasn't sure what was on the agenda. I have to leave in about 10 minutes, and I'll be gone for about 10 minutes, so I can come back.
Oh, well, I'll tell you what, if we, if you have to leave, you're going to leave for about 10 minutes and then come back, or you're going to leave in 10 minutes?
I will be leaving in 10 minutes, and I should be back by 7:05 or so. So if it hasn't popped yet, I'll just wait.
Okay, so if, if I will have you on my list. If we miss you, I'll come back and let you have your comments, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Lance. And you, you sir are with an item that's on the agenda?
Yes.
Super. Then we will just wait till that item. So there is otherwise nobody to speak under public participation. Public hearings. The City Council will take public comment on the following. Order to extend the ordinance establishing a moratorium on mineral extraction, lagooning, and/or creation of ponds for an additional 180 days to allow time for the mineral extraction task force to complete its work on development of land use regulations governing this activity. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Steve, are you going to present on this?
So the, I'll keep this very brief. So the, the presentation is, the city put a, has a, currently has a moratorium on the development of lagooning as far as the, here, within the municipal bounds of Sanford, predominantly because our current ordinances do not provide for any standards or, for the lagooning activity. So for, for the public, lagooning is excavation and mineral extraction in or gravel pit below the water table lines. You actually would dig below the water table, dig into the water table, dig below that, and continue to excavate gravel below the water line. The, the Maine Department of Environmental Protection does have specific standards and permitting in place for that, but the city does not have any supplemental activity around that. So pursuant to the ordinance that's in place currently, the, just, I'm trying to get opened up here. The city established a mineral extraction task force. We have worked over the past year to develop a new ordinance that does account for lagooning, does allow for that, but sets specific standards in, in conjunction with the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. So administration seeks to extend for the second time the ordinance for an additional 180 days, which would take us through, I believe, February 24th of 2023, at which time I would reasonably believe that the planning board will have finished its work on the, on the mineral extraction ordinance that's out there currently. So legal counsel advises us that as long as the city is making good headway, reasonable progress on this, which I, I feel very comfortable that the city has, because we've developed the entire ordinance, we have the standards for, for lagooning in that particular ordinance. It's just going through the review process now with the planning board, for which they'll come back ultimately with a recommendation to the City Council. City Council will then pick that up, complete the work on the adoption of the ordinance, at which time lagooning will be addressed. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda. There is nothing on the consent agenda. Old business, 22-328-01. Order to discuss recommended amendments to the Sanford City Charter pursuant to review by the Sanford Charter Review Committee, and take under advisement to move or not move forward for a referendum vote in November 2022. Steve, do you want to talk us through the, what I had in my backup, and I didn't know if you had anything specific. Did we hear anything back from the attorney that we need to look at? Because I didn't see that in there. Did I?
Yes.
Was it, was it the page that said Agenda Item Two?
Yes. Agenda Item Number Two. So all of those questions that are in there, one through, I believe, seven, those are the questions that were reviewed and developed by the municipal attorney, Philip Saucier. So in my summarization, summarization to, to our attorney, that, that memo to the attorney is, is in the packet. I thought I was providing assistance by developing the questions myself and offering them to, to save both he time and us money. But he came back with a legal review that any of the summarization points could not be in the question itself. It had to follow the question. So he then reformatted those. Item number two, do you want, do you want me to go through those now?
Well, let me just, can I just, yes. I think that what we'll do is, we'll start with them, and then, because I have a feeling that this is the one that's going to probably just, will be discussing the most. So my question is, is what appears before us exactly what would be on the ballot?
Yes.
Exactly from the, the, the whole summary and a copy to, down to a copy of the full redlined amendment, correct?
Correct. So without getting into the detail, the, the first one, which is the large, the largest piece.
Yep, let's go through that one. Let's do that.
State law allows for you to summarize that when it's too long to reasonably print. So Article Six as amended, as it, as it's summarized here, is four pages long.
Yeah.
That's too long to put into a ballot. So if the council moves forward with this question as it's formatted with a summary, Article Six as, as redlined, copied and amended will be available at the clerk's office for the public to inspect for absentee ballots. You know, it's all, also be posted at each of the election locations.
Okay. Does anybody feel the need to read this through again? Because what I'll do is, I know that this was, I'm pretty sure what Lance was here for and the gentleman in the audience, and I, and we have had a discussion about it. If we need to have further discussion, does anyone object to allowing the public to comment on what we have before us? Okay. So, is Lance still here, or did he leave?
He's still on.
Lance? No, he's still here. Lance, would you, do you have time to comment now? Or did we lose you? Well, he hasn't answered. So, sir, would you like to come up and tell us who you are, and maybe you can comment if this is the item that you're here for? It's not? Oh, okay. Okay. As long as I know, Sue, I just don't like to miss any. It's hard when I'm trying to watch somebody that's on Zoom and people in the audience, so. Oh, the Legion, of course. Well, you know, I just don't.
They're gentlemen of a certain age.
So I don't, I don't agree with people.
Who would have been in a war.
All right. And I know Joe's home, he's on Zoom, so Joe Doran is. So is Lance still here or not? Okay, so I imagine when Lance comes back, he'll put his hand up, maybe, hopefully. So let's, let's go through our discussion on this item. So let me just tell you that the process is going to be, as we discuss this, we're going to vote on each one of these. If we want to go on to the next one and wait till Lance comes back, I don't have a problem with that. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. I, I would like to give him a chance to, to speak to it. So let's do Agenda Amendment Item Two A. Steve?
So Amendment Item Two A is put forward in there. It looks at Section 619.2 Emergency Appropriations. It seeks to extend the council-approved, pre-approved authorization for borrowings, which is currently set at $250,000, to extend that to $1 million for an emergency appropriation. Any emergency appropriation, as spelled out in the article, is subject to the declaration and the establishment of an emergency pursuant to the initiative and referendum provisions as set forth in Article 13 of this charter. So it is, is simply an expansion from $250,000 to $1 million as far as council authority, and the Charter Review Committee felt that that was modernizing that amount, because that amount had been in there for the past 10 years, and that to bring that to today's standards, to give the council similar capacity as it had in the first adoption of the, of the charter, that that should be brought to the $1 million level.
So can I just ask a question, Steve? Because in the first one that we looked at, that is, that 619.2 is included in that summary, and so we're removing it from that?
No. So there, there's, there's two, two approaches on that.
Oh, so we're going to have them both.
So 619.2 is included in that first charter question, because it's part of the entire Article Six. If that question should fail, you can have the subsequent question, which only looks at that one element as part of Article Six.
That makes sense. I just was, wanted to be sure. Okay, so.
Just one quick comment on this one.
Count, Deputy Mayor Hurley.
I just wanted to comment. We were, when we looked at the Brunswick fire station, we asked the Brunswick, there was a town, there was a town council there, and we asked them specifically, so, did you have to go out to bond for this? Do you have to go out and get a vote for this? He says, no. Like, that was a big surprise to him. So for a 12, I guesstimated, by the time it all added up, about 12 and a little bit of change, about $12 million, they voted on their fire station. The land purchased, the architect's fees, and the complete construction. And so this is just, I feel this is a very small ask to make sure that we, using, you know, inflationary numbers, we get to a million, so that when there is some sort of an emergency we have to handle, we can at least do up to a million. So I thought this was a very minor ask. I know it'll be hard to explain to people, but it does, you know, it, it does give us a little bit more leeway to deal with issues that might crop up during the year, rather than go to bond on it, so.
Yeah, the town, the town counselor that happened to be there said that they have an option on their, in their charter. They can send it to the voters, or they can, in, in areas where they consider it a public safety issue, where they need to do something, and, and, and you should, and it shouldn't be left up, because there are some real serious safety issues. I think their fire station was 100 years old. So they decided to take that bull by the horns and just put it through that way. And it'd be nice if we had that same option, but we don't. So this is just a way to try to not put, you know, things that are over $250,000 to the voters every time. So it's a lot, it's not, we don't think it's a big ask. Anyway, so is there any more discussion on this item? Counselor Stackpole?
Yeah, I just want to say that this is good for 10 years. So if it sounds like a lot of money, you have to project it out 10 years from now. And I think just like the $250,000 that's in there, that sounded like a lot of money 10 years ago. So anyways, keep that in mind as you look at these numbers.
Okay, so I am going to move that we move forward Amendment Item Number Two A to the ballot in November. Is there a second? Counselor Martell?
I just wanted to ask a question.
Can I just see if there's a, no, I'll let you ask a question. I just need, I asked for a second. Deputy Mayor.
I'll second that. Go ahead.
Go ahead with your question.
I just wanted to ask Steve, just for the sake of the audience, what might be some examples of something that would be over 250, but maybe up to a million that maybe we've come across in the past?
Yes. So, I hear 619.2. Isn't, not that large a sum of money. So. So, but that would be a prime example of that type of an emergency.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments by the council? Anybody have their hand up? Nope. Um, oh, he is, okay. Lance, did you want to talk about this item or did you want, it was mostly the budget one that you wanted to comment on? Okay, I see you're nodding.
Only the budget one.
All right, so seeing no other discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, by a show of hands, moving this forward. That is unanimous of all those present. Okay, let's go back. Lance, are you here for the duration now?
Depending on how long you define duration. Yes, I'm just kidding, yes.
No, no, I mean, so we'll go back. I just didn't know if you had a limited time that you can be back and you have to go somewhere else.
I'm good, plenty of time.
Okay. How does anybody feel if we just move through these others quickly? Or do you want to go back to the, I guess, let's go back to the budget. Let's go back to the first one, Item Number Two. May as well get it over with. Okay, so Lance, we, we went over what this, this is. This is the way that this item would appear on the ballot. We have previously voted to move it forward. We will have to vote again this evening to do that after having seen the language. I assume you have some comments about this, so the floor is yours.
All right, awesome, thank you. I pictured this being more of a public participation thing, but here we go. So I'm Lance Honig, resident of Springvale. This will be about five to seven minutes, if you'll allow it. I just wanted to comment on the decisions you made a couple of weeks ago regarding the recommendations from the Charter Committee, on which I served as chairperson along with five other volunteers and two of you. I have also previously served as Chair of the Budget Committee. First, I'd like to publicly thank the members of the committee, the community that served on the Charter Committee. Know that between reviewing the original Charter Commission, the Charter itself, and eight two-hour meetings, I guess we're talking about 20 to 25 hours of commitment on average for each person that served on the committee. Not the end of the world, but not insignificant particularly because we all said yes when asked to volunteer without really knowing what we were doing. Most sections of the Charter were simple, just involved correcting grammar or minor oversights in the Charter. In total, that work probably could have been done in one to two meetings and really required no special skills. By far where we spent the most time on the discussion was restoring the citizen vote on municipal budget and on Section Six, the budget. There were three main things where we spent our time. First and most urgent, because other decisions were dependent on this, was the possibility of restoring the citizen vote on the municipal budget. It became very clear early on that this was a non-starter with the council members of our committee that the council would not approve restoring the vote on municipal budget. However, it was the only area that we got citizen feedback on, and all feedback, though there wasn't much, wanted the vote restored. After much discussion and seeing we would get nowhere, we voted on whether to recommend restoring the budget and the vote failed seven to one, I believe. I can see both sides of this decision, but personally, if I were on council, I would have preferred to restore the vote if for no other reason than to establish goodwill with citizens. The second topic was the Budget Committee itself. Most people seem to feel that the current budget process has flaws. In fact, I have said in the past that if the process were not changed, the Budget Committee did not have a purpose. At that time, because I do believe in public participation, I also submitted several proposed changes while I was part of the Budget Committee. But you as council decided that you were not interested in making any changes to the process, and I was told that my services were no longer required on the committee. It should be noted here, if the budget process has flaws, this still has always been under the power of the council to change if they wish at any time if they wished. I don't think there's anything in the Charter that prohibits you from changing how you manage your budget process other than that there is a Budget Committee. So any changes you have wanted to make, you could have already done. The city manager suggested that a solution could be to expand the Budget Committee from its current seven members to seventeen. Seven council members, five school committee members, five members of the public that serve three-year terms. This is an imperfect solution, but the assurance was that this expanded committee could serve throughout the year, allowing it to do strategic thinking that does not always appear to happen today. It would also mean that all parts of what I think of as a three-legged stool would be represented, the city, the school and taxpayer, particularly since we as citizens cannot vote nor can we petition to overturn a council vote on the budget. We debated this at length and settled on this as a solution to present. Third was the decision to ramp up our CIP capital improvement plan from its current 4% to 7.5% over a 10-year period. This was again at the suggestion of the city manager, who has done extensive work in analyzing the ongoing cost of actually supporting and repairing our infrastructure. From our point of view, putting this in the Charter would make this a priority. And yes, it would tie the hands of the council, something that couldn't be cut just because it's the easy thing to cut when operations budgets get too big. This is what happened in the past, why our roads had gotten to where they had up until five or so years ago and why we needed the bomb. It was ironic to me that the mayor indicated that she could not imagine that a future council would ever reduce road funding instead of operations funding to manage current budgets because that's exactly what we did for many, many years and is the reason our infrastructure had deteriorated so badly. Putting it in the Charter ensures that future councils cannot do that for at least 10 years. Also realize that our committee took specific action to make sure that we solicited feedback from the public, including social media posts, the comment box on the city website for this purpose. We invited the council, this year's Budget Committee, the school committee and the superintendent of schools to participate, collaborate in our meetings, and they did so. Finally, the solutions we arrived at were once proposed by your own city manager, Mr. Butler. Last week, Mayor Mistracchio came to the meeting, having stricken our recommendations in both of these areas, proposing putting CIP back at 4% and abolishing the Budget Committee altogether. She said she came to this to solution, solution on her own and that she did so because she thought it was best. You all agreed there was no real debate or disagreement. I would have liked to have seen more debate about why the mayor's solution that she came up with all on her own was superior to our solution, which included all stakeholders, or at least a discussion and vote on our recommendations before moving on to hers. You could say that we as citizens can still have an impact through public comment. I have found that to not be the case. You also make some conflicting comments, both referring to the Budget Committee as an unnecessary redundancy and also indicating that you have relied on them to do the work and have relied on their recommendations, particularly when you need to defend decisions within the public. I found it curious when council members last week made comments like it was time to step up to take accountability while at the same time indicating that this has always been under your control. Being honest, there are times that it does not seem that all of you have fully reviewed and prepared during the budget process so that you're fully prepared to discuss, publicly debate and make decisions regarding the budget. And nothing here would change that. I also, as a citizen, don't have an understanding of the vision, the long-term plan and the parameters on which decisions are made. And it seems I should, I should if my only recourse is my vote for council members every three years. The Charter Committee knew that our proposals were merely suggestions and that you ultimately make the decisions. The two of you are on this committee and part of these decisions. And obviously, the mayor feels strongly about this, and in this case, it would seem that her decision had already been made. As such, before we agreed to serve, it could have been made clear that you were only going to accept abolishing the Budget Committee and that CIP would remain at 4% and that there would be no restoral of the vote, no matter what the committee or the public said. I would have, of course, I would have, of course, in that case, declined the invitation to be on the committee, though I'm sure plenty of others would have chosen to participate. The committee would have come to the desired conclusion. You would have accepted the recommendations. We as citizens would have all moved on and voted in November. I'm happy to help if help is genuinely wanted, but time is my most precious resource and I try not to put myself in positions where it's wasted. I tell you this as feedback on your process for you to consider when appointing citizen volunteers to committees in the future. I know for me personally, this process, along with my participation on Budget Committee, has skewed how I view community participation and my perception of how the council views citizen volunteerism. I don't agree with eliminating the committee because I don't agree with the premise that the council knows all and cannot benefit from outside perspective. I don't agree with leaving CIP at 4% when our city manager says the number is closer to 7.5% because when tough decisions need to be made, sustaining the operations expense budget will always win and we'll just end up back where we were after having made strides. But mostly, I don't agree with the process of appointing committees, having them do all the work and then summarily disregarding the recommendations in favor of your own opinions without so much as a conversation. I've heard feedback that this isn't the first time and it's a shame and it says a lot because it helps explain why we have so few members of the public willing to engage. If I had known this would be how it was handled, I would have more strongly advocated for the restoration of the vote or the establishment of a more formal Charter Commission. I will not be supporting the changes proposed to our Charter as listed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Lance, and I'm sorry that you feel like your, your time was wasted. I honestly used as the basis for appointing you as Chair, the letter that you wrote that I had access to back, I think it was an email that you sent in November of 2019, prior to the 2020 budget season, which says specifically that you even voted against having a Budget Committee because I questioned the effectiveness and efficiency of it. And honestly, I was hopeful that, and it was not my place to insert myself into that committee as I have done with all committees that I have been involved with appointing. I don't, I let them run their course, whether it was the Trails Committee or the Mineral Task Force Committee. I did nothing different. I did observe and watch all of the meetings. I was hopeful that you would come back with something that was better than what we had. And I do not feel personally that that was the case and it would have not been. I could not in good conscience support that. So I'm just, I was hoping for something that was less unwieldy and less, less inefficient. And instead, my assessment of what was proposed was much worse than what we have now. And I felt that the school committee expressed exactly the same, the same feelings as well. So I feel like it's time to put this to rest and let the voters decide. And I can live with that, whatever the voters decide. And if they decide that what we have is better than what we're proposing, so be it. So be it, because I can live with what we've got right now.
May I respond?
Sure, but I'm just, I don't want to get into a back and forth. I mean, you had, you had your say, but you may respond, sure.
I don't want to get into back and forth, but just a clarification on the comment that you referenced of mine. I feel like you've taken that out of context because I feel accompanying that multiple times was, was, were suggestions that I gave as part of Budget Committee in order to make the Budget Committee process better. And the city council rejected those changes. I do not, I felt like the Budget Committee, as constructed and as you have been doing it, is ineffective. So if that's how you want to.
No, no, I'm just saying that in my mind, a committee that has no authority, that makes recommendations, but the authority ultimately rests by Charter with the city council, it's time for the city council to step up and, and fulfill and be accountable for the budget that goes forth. That's how I see it. So let me, I have other counselors that would like to comment as well. Counselor Stackpole, then Counselor Brink, and then Deputy Mayor Hurley. And I'll go right down the roll. Look, everybody can have their chance. Counselor Stackpole.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I really resent the inference that I did not approach the city council work and the budget work on the Budget Review Committee with an open mind. I spoke my piece, whether it was eloquent or not, I spoke my piece when it came to the Budget Committee. I said I would not undermine the work of the Budget Review Committee. I did not undermine the work of the Budget Committee. I said my piece during the review process and I stood by what I, what I've said. If there were no motion to change what the Budget Committee, the Budget Review Committee brought forward, 17 people on the, on the Budget Committee, I would have voted for it. But I believe there's a better solution. I spoke to that as a better solution during Budget Review Committee. I've had no influence on the city council proposal here, but I support the city council proposal here. But I truly resent the inference that I did not approach this with an open mind and I came here with some predetermined mission. I did not. And with that, we can move on.
Counsel Brink, you're next.
I just wanted to make one comment about the history of creating the budget because I've been on this for probably as long as I've lived in Sanford. And it was the selectmen who created the budget. Then it was typically the warrant committee and the town meeting who cut the budget. And many times, they went after the roads, which was disappointing. And that's why we were in the place we are now. So I just wanted to kind of correct that, that it wasn't, first of all, it wasn't the mayor at that time because we didn't have a mayor and we didn't have a city council at that time. Also, I had a problem with 17 people being on any committee as anybody who studied organizational behavior knows that once you get beyond the number 13 in any committee, the committee seems to fail. And in fact, even 13 is a large number for a committee. The other thing was, within the proposal that we have now, there are going to be public hearings. So I think that that would be a little more beneficial so you can hear from more of the public and the people who are interested in the budget can speak at that time. So we might even hear from more people than we would hear from now. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hurley, you are next.
Sure, Lance knows how I feel. I was probably one of the ones who was most vocal. But one of the things that I get the most upset about when people talk about the budget and is this impression, and it goes way back to the Warren Committee days, is that somehow the people who choose to put themselves forward, whether elected or appointed because we've had it both ways, somehow represent people more. Somehow, we are the other. We are the city and they are the people. Unfortunately, that's completely incorrect because we sit up here, represent the people of Sanford. And we do it every time we talk about the budget, where every time we have meetings, every time we look at contracts, every time we discuss how do we get these roads fixed. So I represent the people of Sanford. I don't represent the city. I don't represent Steve and Allison. I'm just looking at a couple of the staff that's here and Sue Cody. I represent taxpayers as, as much as, if not more than Budget Committee is ever worth. But that really bothers me every time somebody says that and I just, I wanted to say that. The other thing that I want to say is, the main problem this community has always had for years is a distrust of how money is spent. And as, as Counsel Brink has said, they were the ones who were consistently cutting the road. So they would strip stuff from the budget every year at town meeting and we would lipstick the roads and try to, you know, continue to move on. Well, guess what? We're paying the price of lipstick roads right now. We have been for years. We've been trying to get more and more money into the capital improvements and trying to move ahead for years and years and years. And that's, whether you had, the Budget Committee had nothing to do with any improvement in this. It's always been the city council pushing for stuff, the city manager pushing for stuff. The Budget Committee does nothing to that. The Finance Committee did nothing to that. The Warrant Committee probably destroyed roads by just constantly cutting it and making those recommendations before the city, before the town meeting. It's, I would rather see this fail and deal with what we're dealing with now than go to 17 members of a committee. It reminds me of the 17 to 21 members, I think we had of the Warrant Committee. They would break up into subcommittees, go department by department, try to tear everything apart, you know, and nothing happened. Absolutely nothing happened, except they decided that the school didn't need 1,000 pencils. They only needed 900 pencils. I mean, that's the sort of discussions that we got into. So I find it's going backwards. I've made it very clear, I find it's going backwards. And as far as voting on the budget, we got like five or six letters from people about the vote on the budget. One of the things I encourage so many of my Charter Committee members to do, go and read other charters of communities our size, how they do their budget. And they're more progressive than we are. They get their budgets done through their city councils. Maybe they pull some extra people in as a Budget Committee, but they don't do it in any way that makes them contrary to the city council. It's more of a, let's build a budget together, let's work together. It isn't an attempt to try to catch the city council at something. It's an attempt to participate in a city process to make sure we have the best budget and move forward the best for our citizens. So I'm disappointed that many of my Charter Committee members didn't go read other budgets. I studied so, or other charters, I studied so many charters when we wrote the 2002 Charter in order to attempt to move Sanford ahead. And we made some progress. We made some progress with the second Charter. And I want to continue to make progress because it's nice to go to other, it's, well, it's actually hard to go to other communities and find out how much more they can react to changing circumstances because they have better control over the budget, how much better they can put through bonds and move ahead for their people. I mean, look at all the communities that don't have a backwards process where the people are voting on the budget or people are participating when they don't really know the budget or don't spend time all year on the budget or let's set up another contrary group to look at the budget. They actually get stuff done. And that's what I hated about hearing the distrust in the, you know, in the way the budget was discussed at the Charter Committee level, this distrust in general from people's comments. Every step we've made forward from the town meeting, Warrant Committee days, has only improved what this community has been able to do. It just has. And I believe that firmly. I would like to see if this next step can occur. And I support trying to make it occur. If it fails, I'm, I'm okay with that. People aren't ready for it, but I'm not going back to 17 people. That's crazy. It's, that is just not forward progress for a community, almost 23,000 people. Thank you.
Counsel Martell, you had your hand up next, and then I think Counsel Turmath.
Thank you. I just had a couple of comments. One, I think, I appreciate the, the public input tonight. One is that the number of 17 members has come up a few times. I personally, I think that's a little bit high, but, you know, that might be something that we could, we could adjust. So I talked to a few people that were on the original Charter Committee. And my understanding was the purpose of that was to have more public participation and sort of a balanced input from the public, city council. input from the public, City Council members, as well as school board members. So while I did vote to move this forward, I think I'm going to change my approach and try to keep this in place and see if we can just make some adjustments to make it work better.
Councillor Termath.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, I'd like to say that, of course, you know, any municipal budget, city, town, is complex. There's a lot, there's a lot that goes into a municipal budget. Having the Budget Committee's recommendations, and I totally understand exactly where Lance is coming from, where he feels that he put all this work into his end of it, and his end of it was not heard. You know, yeah, we got to do better. Absolutely. You know, I'll sit here and I'll be critical of that all day. Because when I hit the streets and I'm out there in the community and I'm talking to people and getting their input from, you know, homeowners, taxpayers, ratepayers, they feel just exactly how Lance put it, that their voice is not heard, that there's this disconnect between government and community. And that's where we got to do better. I agree, having a seventeen, you know, member committee, way too large. Absolutely. But, you know, when people bring concerns, rightful concerns, they're thoughtful, they're thought out. That's why I keep saying, you know, we need to have a Town Hall type of session when it comes to big issues. I know we're going to get in the weeds on this stuff, but we need to get community involvement. All right? The ratepayers, the taxpayers' voices need to be heard, once again, at City Hall. And I just urge that through my colleagues here tonight, that we listen to those concerns. But yes, absolutely, I did vote for moving this thing forward to the voters. Because of course, for all of us, that is our voice, right, being voters. So whether this thing passes or not, we'll adjust fire and continue to move forward past the election. But yes, I agree with what you guys have said, you know, Deputy Mayor, and saying, hey, look, you know, we need to, excuse me, but we need to continue to advocate for our ratepayers. Thank you.
You should have them come to our meetings then. Every time they say that to you, say, "Come to a meeting, come to a meeting, come to a meeting," because that's what I do.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Councillor Termath.
Thank you. And yes, I have been, actually.
So, Councillor Hanselman.
So first, I would like to, I guess, apologize that there wasn't more conversation about the change in the Budget Committee at the last meeting. For me personally, I was really stuck, frankly, on the CIP percentage, and so I think I was hyper-focused on that from a conversation standpoint. And I do hear Lance saying there wasn't a lot of conversation. So, you know, I feel like we could have had this conversation two weeks ago, but here we are. I think it's important for folks to understand, or be reminded, or just know that when it comes to Budget Committee members, there's been years where we're literally begging our friends, our family members, our neighbors, our coworkers to step up and take an active role in that committee. There are times where we do not have applicants for it. So there's that piece as well, that looking at rounding up five committee members to even spend not just a period of a couple of months, but years committing to that does seem daunting to me. I think it's also important to understand and recognize that we had a school committee, longstanding school committee member, publicly speak against the Budget Committee proposal from the Charter, and I take that very seriously and with a lot of weight because of them actually being a school committee member. The other thing that I want to mention, and somewhat in response to Councillor Termath's comment, I find I struggle with the question of who needs to take responsibility for engagement in our local government. Is it actually, at some point, a citizen has to step up and say, "I will be engaged, and I will show up, like you are here tonight." Or "I will communicate to the mayor, to the council, or I will serve on a committee, or I will run for a public office, and show up and be involved." As councillors and as a city, we have been working a lot harder to get the word out about things going on. I personally have worked really hard to engage via social media and be available and invite, like Deputy Mayor Hurley, who was saying, people to meetings constantly. And we have a town, we have every opportunity for public speaking at every meeting. And so it feels frustrating a little bit to act as if we're not trying to engage our neighbors and our family and other citizens to attend meetings and be part of the process, because we are constantly. So I just wanted to mention that. And the last thing in closing is that this is my fourth year as a City Council member, and I want to say frankly that it took me probably two years at least to get my feet under me, to really feel like I understood a little bit about municipal operations, about our budgetary needs, about our long-term planning for sustainability, for short-term emergent needs, what departments required. And that experience came through attending a significant amount of subcommittee meetings, as well as council meetings and workshops. And so I do feel like when City councillors are well-engaged and doing a good job up here, which I hope we all are, that we are the best people to make the decision on the budget, because we understand and are fully involved in a level that a Budget Committee could never be in day-to-day operations, which directly impact our budget process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hanselman. Are there any other council comments before I, there's one other member of the public that has a comment. Okay, I will call on Diane Conley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How are you this evening?
Fine, thank you.
First of all, my comments are not of any board or committee I may be on this evening or in the city.
Diane, back up from your mic a bit.
Yeah, just a little bit, Diane. It's a little loud.
Is that better?
Yes, dear. Thank you.
Thank you. I've listened to Councillor Hanselman's comments about, and Councillor Termath's comments about people not engaging. I really kind of resent that, because I engaged. I went to those meetings. I put some, what I thought was thoughtful engagement into the process with the Charter meetings. So to say that I didn't, or being dismissed with my comments, this is how I feel about it. I really hope that people are paying attention, because, you know, I saw four appointed budget members from the public not show up to a meeting that they have to show up on. That's not right. That's, you know, you handpicked these people, and they didn't bother to show up. But there were others that did show up from the community, and the comments were dismissed. And that's how I feel about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. Councillor Stackpole, did you have something else you wanted to say before we vote on this?
Yeah. You know, I really think that the basis of this is about trust. And it's trust in the people that you elected, and you elect your City Council. We are year-round. We are involved with the finances of the city year-round. We do make and facilitate discussions, going back to our subcommittees, in conference with experts, in conference with the City Manager, all year long. I don't know what you do about public engagement. I have really no idea. Because ten years ago, we built into the existing Charter the opportunity for people to come out and vote for the budget. We set a threshold, and I'm not going to go deeply into that, but we set a threshold, a fair threshold, that a certain percentage of the people had to vote for the budget in order for that to take effect. Five years went by. That had a sunset after five years. Five years went by, the threshold was not met. And so that opportunity got to be, was sunsetted. Now, the Budget Review Committee, and I said this the last time, I think there was one or two members of the public. Now, to be fair, I can't remember the day now, I'm sorry, but it was at 10:30 in the morning, on a weekday. But there were very few, I'm going to say one or two people that showed up in person. I don't think there was ever anybody on Zoom, but, you know, I could be mistaken there. These were Zoom meetings. There certainly was not a huge outcry at the Budget Review Meeting. The letters, I believe there were seven letters, that did all speak to putting a referendum back in on the budget. Seven letters, okay? I appreciate these people's input. I appreciate Mr. Neal coming down, and he sat in the front seat there, and I think he was here for all the meetings. I know Councillor Brink was there at a meeting. I know the mayor was there. This is what I remember, looking out in the audience and listening to the conversation. If this is such an important issue, why isn't there a great deal of public engagement on this? And the answer is, it just doesn't seem to be something where the community comes out and steps up and says, you know, "This isn't something that we want." I believe this is the right thing to do for the city of Sanford. And that's why I support it, because I think it's the right thing to do, and I think this is the decision that it's up to the voters, the voters need to make in the fall in order for us to continue. I think to do the great work we've done since the Charter Commission reformed things, created the City Council, incorporated the community into a city, and streamlined government so that we could be as effective as we've been. And we can do more if we're given that opportunity. And you have to trust us that we're going to get it done. If we don't get it done, then when you go to the voting booth, then you vote us out. And that's the way it should work, and that's what I think is in the best interest of the city. We'll leave it up to the wisdom of the voters in the fall, but I think the Council, if we move ahead with this, is making an excellent decision tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Stackpole. I don't see any other hands up. Is there any more other discussion among the council? Seeing none, then I will move that we amend, we send to the voters Amendment Item Two, "Shall the city approve the Charter Amendment reprinted below concerning the budget?" Is there a second, Councillor Stackpole?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just one comment.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
I hope this passes, but if it fails, I think the Budget Committee is much more manageable now at its size it is at than seventeen people.
Thank you.
Maybe you should explain if it fails.
Well, if it fails, we have what we have.
Right.
You know, if it fails, what is currently in existence? And that doesn't, that doesn't mean that this council, after the election, couldn't sit down and say, "Okay, let's see how we can make that budget process more efficient for everyone concerned." I personally think it's still one of those things where you have an advisory committee that sits for a couple of months that has no authority, and it's going to be difficult, but it is what it is. Councillor Termath.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So moving forward, like whether this thing goes up or down, you know, November 8th, that's one thing. But coming back to it, one thing I think we're failing right now to listen to is what Lance said as the Chairperson of the Budget Committee, where they put thoughtful process, they put ideas, thoughtfulness, recommendations to the Council, and everything was ignored.
That's not true.
Well, absolutely.
So that's...
That's not true.
Let Lance back, and Lance can ask.
That's not true. Lots of things were listened to. Did you, I'd love to know if you actually watched the Budget Committee meeting, Mr. Termath.
Deputy Mayor Hurley, do we need to take a five-minute recess? Because I'm not going to have arguments here. All right, listen to me. I'm just going to say one thing. I have been involved with this budget process in many iterations as a school board member from 1992 until now, and as a legislator, coming back and watching that process and trying to help it from where I was in Augusta to make sure that this council and this town got the funding that it needed to be able to do the budgeting that it does. So I will just say that when I read Mr. Honig's letter, his recommendations, I think that the council actually did take some of those recommendations and try to implement them. It doesn't change the inefficiency of that process of having a group that has no authority making recommendations that the council can just go through with the budget process. It just is, it was, we who participated in the process that created that Budget Committee knows that it was supposed to be a transition to a time when the people of Sanford would have a trust in the City Council to do that process themselves. We were transitioning to that. And I just think it's time, I will take full responsibility for putting this amendment forward, because I think it's time for us to give the voters a chance to see if we've earned that trust since 2004, when we had the first Town Council. It'll be twenty years, twenty years. And before that, we had an extremely inefficient system for a city our size. We weren't a city, we were a town, same size. So anyway, I'm just hoping that this goes before the voters, and as I said, I trust in the voters to make the decision that they want. That's what elections are about. So I will, if there is no other discussion, then I will call the vote. We have a motion and a second on the floor to move this forward. All those in favor, by a show of hands, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five in favor. All those opposed? Two opposed. Motion passes. It will be on the ballot. Thank you. And if we could all just take a breath, because we have some people waiting, and I promise, Joe, I see you're there, but you're at the lake, so I don't feel too badly for you. I feel badly for the guys, the one that's here, sitting here, waiting for us. So I'm going to move through this really quickly, I hope, because the other issues should be not a big deal, and I'm going to move you up to first under New Business, so hang in there, okay? Okay. All right. So now we did item number two. We're on Amendment Item Three. Shall the city approve the Charter Amendment reprinted below? This concerns the appointment of the assessor, correct, Steve? I will move that we send this Amendment Item Number Three, Shall the City Approve the Charter Amendment of 402.3, forward to the ballot. Is there a second, Councillor Brink?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands. That is a unanimous vote. Amendment Item Number Four, Shall the City Approve the Charter Amendment Reprinted Below, 705.1? This is the capital projects to increase the amount that the City Council may bond from $250 to $1 million. I will move that we send Amendment Item Four onto the ballot in November. Is there a second, Councillor Brink?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands. That is a unanimous vote. Amendment Item Five, Shall the City Approve the Charter Amendment Printed Below? A majority of the Planning Board shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business, but a smaller number may adjourn from time to time. At least 24 hours notice of the time and place of holding such adjourned meeting shall be given to all members. It says, "Every act of the Planning Board that requires a vote shall require an affirmative vote of four members." I'll move that we send this one, this Amendment Item forward as well. Is there a second? Councillor Hanselman.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is a unanimous vote. Okay, Amendment Item Six is the City Approve the Charter Amendments of Section 1413, which are definitions. I will move that we send this item forward to the ballot. Is there a second? Councillor Brink.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is a unanimous vote. Okay. I am, I'll tell you, the last one was about, we had two derivations to change the term of the mayor. I'm just not going to put this one forward unless somebody else really wants to make a motion to do this. I will just say that these, I looked at them. I think it's just not worth having that discussion right now. I think that's for future councils and Charter Commissions to have. So unless somebody disagrees and wants to make the motion, Deputy Mayor Hurley, I see your face. Making that face, I'd say that's a no. So does anybody have a motion that they'd like to put forward? I see none, so this item, we will just put aside, okay? All right, people. Consent agenda, oh no, we're back to that one. New business. All right. So I'm going to do two things. Unless there's objection, I'm going to add an item under New Business, 22-406-01, and that will go to the bottom, and that is order to authorize the pedestrian use of sidewalks and shoulders along Main Street. It's a road closure, but that will go to the end. And unless there's objection, I'm going to move 22-394-01 up to the first item in New Business. That is, order to consider a request from the American Legion for permission to move forward with... That is Order to Consider a Request from the American Legion for Permission to Move Forward with Improvements to Their Facility to Include an Elevator Pending Final Design and Completion of the Standard Permitting and Inspection Process. I think Joe Doran is going to present first on this, or is the gentleman in the audience?
I'll just have an opening statement that refers to, it should be Dan Hathaway was the commander.
No, it's not Dan, is it? Who is it?
I'm Bill.
Bill, were you at the meeting on Zoom?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Thought I recognized your face.
Dan had to leave.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He had some medical problems.
Okay, so you go first, Joe, and then we'll listen to Bill.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you perfectly, except I'm really jealous that you're at the lake.
So am I.
Somebody has to be up here.
Yeah, I know.
The American Legion has been a caretaker of the building that we're in since I believe 1938, when the building was deeded over to the city. And in the last seven, eight years that I've been the finance manager at the Legion, you know, the Legion has taken very good care of the building and upgrading at our expense and, you know, through fundraising and donations that we do receive. Currently, we are looking at, and we're in desperate need, not desperate need, but we're in need that would really help us out for liability, for one thing, is to install an elevator in the building. And Bill is going to be addressing that. He's been doing the research on it. But I'd just like to say that over the years, our membership has been growing very nicely. It's increased quite a bit in the last couple of years, and it's primarily because in 2018, smoking was eliminated in the building. And that's the reason why I joined. But we've been very fortunate to get very committed veterans to work on our committees, to be involved, and they all recognize the need, I think as well as the town recognizes, the veterans groups. We work with all veterans and needs with their families, and we're also very committed with the youth in the town. So we have a very, our mission for the Legion has always been foremost in our work. And with that said, we would like to have the, you know, with moving forward with the elevator project, to really work closely with the town. The town has a lot of expertise in elevators and new ones, and we have members who are very familiar with construction and with actually installing and working and getting elevators in the construction projects that they worked in. So we're here to just keep you informed of what we're doing. We abide by all codes and the town and we, and all the projects we have, we've been completed. And we've also been very proud to submit and be very, show what our balance sheets look like. And we gave you the most current one the other day, you know, and we've done very well with it in keeping our Legion post, you know, floating and doing a very good job at that. So if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them, or Bill can get right on to where we're at with the project.
Okay, then why don't we let Bill talk, and then I'll let the councilors, if they have any questions afterwards, if that's okay, Joe.
Okay. Right now, I've been working with Otis Elevator, which I see that you people use them too. That's one of the reasons I'm working with Kerry. We know this is a long process. We're looking at a two-year project to try to get this elevator. It's very expensive, and we need your guidance. We need your help. I mean, this isn't, I'm no engineer, and I'm no grant writer. And, you know, these are just, any place you can point us in the right direction to help us with this. All our veterans now are getting up there in age. I mean, we used to run up and down the stairs. Now we do that, and we get the oxygen bottle, take a break, and start again. But, you know, we're getting up there, and we have a lot of people now that can't afford funerals, so they're going with a celebration of life. A lot of our veterans that are passing can't have the celebration of life at our Legion because they can't get up and down the stairs, and neither can their spouses and so forth. This is one of the reasons we're really looking for this. And we'd just like to have your help, your guidance on doing it. We've looked at the most economical ways, which would be to build it outside instead of remodeling the whole inside, and we picked a great location. It's easy, it's very accessible when you're upstairs and downstairs. And for you folks that have never been upstairs, please come on in. You'll love our hall. It's great. We have a full kitchen, and when Joe was talking about improvements, we have a brand-new heating system with our kitchen. We redone the whole kitchen with the hoods, with everything. Everything's right up to code. We have a food elevator to bring food upstairs and downstairs. All our restrooms have been redone. They're all up to code. This is things that we've been working on. And now I think the elevator is something that we really need, and it's something that we're working for really hard. And a little bit of help from you people, and we know you can do it, so we'd appreciate it.
Well, and thank you for coming this evening. And I think that what you're really saying is that you're going to start a fundraising process and looking for grants, and any way that we can help. I know that we have some really good fundraiser activists on this council right here that know how to raise money, so we would be happy to help if nothing else. Like, right now, we're just going to start publicizing it and let people know that it's happening and see what we can do. So I think that's the first step.
Okay.
Anybody, Joe, did you have your hand up? Or no? Did you have something you wanted to add?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, Joe Doran.
Okay, sorry. No, it's just that, we will be looking for guides. We have a lot of people that can't raise money. We have, we're really in need of a grants writer that would really help out, and if, along those lines. And we're, you know, we do a fair job on raising money, but we could use the help where this would probably far exceed $250,000 to $300,000 to do.
Okay, that was going to be my question, how much it was that you were looking at.
The elevator alone was between $130,000 and $150,000, and it's identical to what you have in the hallway. They want it big enough for a gurney and things along that line, so we're not going to go skimpy on it. You know, we really want to make it good.
You're building a shaft too, correct?
Yes, outside.
Any questions by councilors for either Joe or Bill? Counselor Martel?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the veterans and all that they've done for the country. And I fully support helping you guys out any way we can with this, so you've got my support.
Well, thank you very much.
And thank you for staying and watching the rest, the meeting that preceded.
It was very interesting.
And I apologize, sometimes things look like they're going to come up soon on the agenda, and then they don't.
There's some other things I'd love to bring up, but not now.
Well, and tell your friend that I'm just sorry that he had to leave, that we didn't get to it before the seat.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, and thank, thank you. We have to, we have to vote on this because this is a city building. So before we have any more discussion, I'm just going to ask, it is 22, it's Order to Consider a Request from the American Legion for Permission to Move Forward with Improvements to Their Facility to Include an Elevator Pending Final Design and Completion of the Standard Permitting and Inspection Process. Counselor Stackpole?
So moved.
Is there a second? Counselor Brink?
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Counselor Termath?
Yeah, so what I was going to say was, you know, helping out, you know, Post 19, you know, is definitely important because I'll definitely put the word out, you know, to the VFW 9935 and AMVETS Post 3 with their commanders to try to rally the troops to come up with some ideas here to fundraise, you know, for Post 19, for Brothers and Sisters in Arms. And I'd like to, you know, extend, because I am a combat veteran from the Iraq War, and I'd like to extend, you know, my gratitude to the generations that came before us and the veterans that currently are serving right now in harm's way around the world. And so I just want to thank you, sir, for what you do. And I would love to take an opportunity sometime to take a tour of Post 19. Beautiful.
Yep, anytime, everybody's welcome. Just give us a phone call, and we'll be happy to show you around.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Termath. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion by the council? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, motion is unanimous. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to 22-386-01. Order to Accept a Bid from Spectre Manufacturing, Inc. of St. Clair, Pennsylvania for a new municipal solid waste compactor trailer in the amount of $149,012. Do I have a motion to approve? Counselor Brink?
So moved.
Is there a second? Counselor Termath?
Second.
Okay, Steve, are you going to?
No, I'm going to turn this over to Director Hill to describe the need for the compact trailer as well as the bid process that was ensued. So Matt?
Thank you. Thank you, yes. The Department of Public Works advertised and opened bids for the new MSW trailer on March 20th, '22. The department received one bid that was more than the anticipated amount, and we took a considerable amount of time to carefully consider the alternatives of rehabilitating one of our retired units instead. We saw multiple opinions. They unanimously came back that they could not be repaired adequately, and we should go after a new MSW trailer. Well, they could be repaired, but it would be more expensive than just buying a new one. The dealer was contacted. They scheduled a visit there out of Pennsylvania to take measurements, confirm specifications, and then reissue the revised bid based on the above information and obviously market price. So currently, the transfer station is down to one MSW trailer. That means that we basically have to haul it, whether it's half-full or completely full, and it results in, you know, insufficient loads or, you know, we're hauling it whether it's half-empty or completely full. So we recently downed that one trailer, and we had to put MSW into the, like, a front-end loader and then transfer it into one of the bins down below. That is ineffective for us. And so having the second trailer would allow us to haul completely full loads and avoid hauling inefficient partial loads, thereby saving time and money.
Thank you, Matt. Discussion or questions by the council? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in, you didn't want to say anything, did you, Steve? Okay. All those in favor, by a show of hands. It's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Matt. 22-382-01. Order to Approve and Authorize the City Manager to Sign an Agreement Between the City of Sanford and the Eastern Slopes Airport Authority to Provide Services of Airport Pavement Marking at the Freiburg Airport in the amount of $3,679.56. That is correct, right? Proceeds from which will be set aside toward the purchase of a new paint machine. And I think the airport manager, Allison Navia, is already there. You've been very patient. I'll let you present first, because this did go through Subcommittee, but I would really like the council to hear before I ask for a motion.
Good evening. I'm Allison Navia. I'm the airport manager of our Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. This has come forward, as you might remember, from back in March. We entered into an agreement with the Eastern Slope Airport Authority, which runs the airport over in Freiburg for airport management services. So one of the things that I found when I was over there are that all their pavement markings are really in poor, poor condition. And we happen to have a paint machine here and very capable people that can run it. So we looked into doing this agreement so that we could go over there and we could provide those services for them, and then it would help us out because we're in need of a new paint machine with a little bit higher technology so that we can maintain our own markings. So this is a way to kind of think outside the box a little bit, use the equipment and the personnel that we already have to help facilitate that new purchase. So this has gone through two different iterations. At Subcommittee, we thought that we could do an inter-local agreement with the town of Freiburg. The way that Freiburg runs their airport is different than how we do. It's not a department of the town that owns it. It's actually leased out to this airport authority, which is a quasi-governmental board, and they're the ones that run it. So we thought it would be more efficient to do an inter-local agreement with the town. That ended up not being efficient, and there were a couple of different hiccups with insurance coverages. So it was much more smooth and streamlined to do an agreement like this one, where it's exactly the same format of the agreement for the airport management services, except instead of services of airport management, we're doing services of airfield pavement. So we're doing that. We were able to obtain coverage from our aircraft liability insurance instead of MMA to be able to perform the work. And then a reciprocal agreement was also made with Eastern Slope Aviation's insurance coverage so that they cover us on their end too. So we have coverage on both sides. This can go through, and then we can take that funding, and after a couple of years through the budget process, use this to offset some of the money to buy a new pavement machine.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Counselor Martel?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Counselor Hanselman?
I'll second that.
Yes, don't all jump. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Counselor Martel?
I just had a quick question. I know paint's pretty expensive these days, so are they covering the paint? Is this $3,700, like, just kind of our fee for showing up with the equipment and doing it?
It covers the cost of the paint, the travel to get there, a 10-hour day for all of our employees to do the work, and the whole proposal is included in that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and then a fee on top of it too, so that we make a little bit of profit on it as well.
Counselor Termath?
Yes, thank you. So when we sent our crew over there to help them out, are we still, do we have coverage at our airport during that time when they're gone with this agreement?
Yep, so there's a, we won't have anybody on the field sitting there, but we'll, you know, be in contact if anybody needs anything for that period of time. Yep, so it'll take one day.
Go ahead, city manager.
Yeah, the largest part about this was the exercise in the difficulties with anything with that seven-letter word called airport with insurances. So pre-9, post-9/11, everybody in the insurance world just dropped airports out. So we have separate liability and other coverages for our airport by a different carrier than main municipal association. They will not cover anything airport-wise. So the traditional utilization of an inter-local agreement is still standing forward, but we had to make sure that the entities that need to provide the insurance, i.e. Eastern Slope Airport Authority, had the appropriate insurances in place by the same carrier. So that was the largest exercise in exhausting the legal review on this work product, was that the insurances are in place. Those two certificates of insurance with the city properly named are enclosed in the packet as far as backup information. So thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And Allison, I just want to say that I think that any time that we can work out these kind of agreements, and nobody should have to buy that equipment to use it, like, I mean, this is just, it's exactly the kind of thing that we should be doing in other areas, so I appreciate the work that you did.
The guys think it's kind of neat that they can say they've painted multiple airports.
Right, it is kind of cool. Do I, are they going to leave like a sign that says, Painted by Sanford?
A little smiley face.
I would. Why not? They'll never notice it, right? Okay, Counselor Hanselman?
I just had one question, and I'm not sure if it's for Allison or Steve, and it's a fairly immaterial dollar amount, but I'm just curious if it would make sense to earmark the 731 labor costs to offset our actual out-of-pocket and only then use the net of the funds to be set aside for the future equipment purchase.
Ah, the accountant, I love it.
And it's a small amount, but, you know, obviously, we're paying them to be there. So I just thought if we kept that in the regular operating budget and only moved forward the remaining, but is it too small to worry about, Steve?
Well, there's a 15% margin built into this, so that's what we'll move forward to the reserve.
Sounds good.
As long as they paint an arrow that says, you know, with the direction on it, this way to SFM.
It's kind of similar to how I structured the vegetation management contract for the solar, where we already carry in our budget for them to work 40 hours a week, so we're not incurring extra costs for them to work more. It's really just kind of all gravy at that point.
It's like a reimbursement of their.
Of something that we're already paying.
Right.
Yep.
They're just working somewhere else that day.
For that day.
Counselor Termath?
Real quick, Allison, thank you very much for fielding the questions. When is the work potentially going to get done with?
Monday.
On Monday?
Yep. They have a big Aviation Day event next Saturday, so we'd like to get it all up to snuff before then.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, show of hands. That is a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, let's see, where am I at? Okay, 22-401-01. Order to Authorize the City Manager to Submit a Letter of Support on behalf of the City of Sanford to Enroll the City in the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and the Future Community and the Future Community Resiliency Partnership, and to designate the York County Soil and Water Conservation District, YCSWCD, as the city's service provider to help us finalize the enrollment process. Steve, are you going to present this, or is Beth?
I'd like to turn this over to our planning director. She's done the overwhelming majority of work on this since our grant writer has left the organization, and so I call upon Beth to describe what's to be encapsulated in this.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to present this opportunity to you. So as the mayor has indicated, this is a new grant program, a new state municipal partnership called the Community Resiliency Partnership. It's coming out of the Governor's Office of Policy and Innovation of the Future. And essentially what it is, is a partnership to assist municipalities in a process to identify, prioritize, and fund strategic implementate climate adaptation projects. At this point in time, all we would be looking for is authorization to submit this letter of support. The York County Soil and Water Conservation District would write the enrollment application for us. That, their work would be funded through a separate grant that they would write to the state, and there is, it, there's no strings attached. Essentially, they just are there to assist us in putting forward this enrollment application. It would be done, the applications are due by August thirty-first. We expect that the enrollment process will take, they'll probably let us know about whether we made it, which is very unlikely that we wouldn't make it, by sometime in October or November. At that point, the city council would appoint an advisory committee to work with the service, as well as the staff, who would probably be interested in the outcome. It would be to engage the community in a self-assessment process to identify what we have been doing and haven't been doing toward meeting the governor's goals in the Climate Action Plan, and then to hold a public meeting and to help them develop some priorities for applications for potentially up to two small grants a year, roughly fifty thousand dollars each. The, let's see. The first of those grants is anticipated to be available, the application process would be available sometime next spring. There are about nine pages of eligible categories for these potential grants. As I understand it, the city could propose something that's not on that list, and that would make a difference as to whether or not we had to pay a match. And so this is just pretty straightforward at this point, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have going forward. It's really an intention to try to further the city's efforts already underway to pursue sustainability and green initiatives in the interest of climate action.
Thank you, Beth. Can I have a motion to approve? Motion, Councilor Brink?
So moved.
Is there a second? Councilor Stackpole?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion by the council. Councilor Termath?
Yes, so locally, how's this gonna, how's this gonna reduce our greenhouse emissions in Sanford-Springville? If this gets...
So all that we're voting on this evening is a letter of support to enroll the city in the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and the Future Community Resiliency Partnership, and because York County Soil and Water Conservation District is going to help us realize what we can do and utilize the grant process to do that. We have not, and there will be an advisory committee to do that. I'll let the city manager also answer that.
Right, so at this time, it's simply a letter of support to make the application. What, where, where you might apply, and it's a planning piece first. So where you might choose in the future, if awarded and brought into the program, where you, as a council, might choose to support various applications for funding for specific projects is yet to be determined. So, for example, for me, looking at the four major categories, the generalized categories, number two is avoid the impacts and cost of inaction. So for me, the, avoid the cost of inaction, that is to go back through and examine a lot of our culprits. So we know that under the current climatic situation, we have higher propensities for droughts, which doesn't impact our culprits, but we have a higher propensity for twenty-five, fifty, and a hundred-year storms are happening more frequently than before. So any of our roadwork that we're engineering now, we're engineering to those new standards to account for that, but we have older culprits and other systems in play. So I would look towards this funding in those regards, and as was discussed at the subcommittee level, we'd also look towards this Good Old Brook and some other elements within our community. If we can apply for leveraged funding such as this to take fifty to a hundred thousand dollar chunks per year to address some of those impacts, and keep us out of being what's called an MS-four community, where we'd have more stringent stormwater restrictions put upon us as far as how we look at that for future development, and how, and as how we manage our community. Those would be very favorable aspects for which we could apply for this. So it doesn't have to be just about greenhouse gas emissions or just about the advancement of equity through mains climate response. It can be a whole host of very valuable projects for our community.
And Steve, can I just point out that this, there's a lot of backup that was in here, a lot to read, and we can't take advantage of any of this money unless we start this process, correct?
Correct, and we have the Soil and Water Conservation District that is willing to put forward the application on the city's behalf, provided that we partner with them in the future. And they have been an excellent partner with us on the Good Old Brook project, obtaining our current VACALL street sweeper system that we have, and a host of other projects.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions? Councilor Hanselman, go ahead.
Well, and I was just gonna share, Councilor Termath, that the process of doing letters of approval, or letters of intent, so to speak, with grants that move forward is really commonplace for us, and it's more a matter of approving the application, then it comes back at future subcommittee or council meetings for further discussion and actual approval of or acceptance of the grant. So it's kind of part of a process that we do this.
Right, and this particular process involves a community advisory committee as well. Councilor Termath?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So all I was asking for is that if we're gonna request a grant from the state, then, you know, to help, to help us in our green initiative, then all I was asking was that, you know, does Sanford-Springville currently have a greenhouse gas emission issue?
I would say the whole country has one, actually, the whole world, if you want that answer. So I'm not, that isn't germane to what we're voting on, a letter of support. So I personally believe we do have a greenhouse gas emission, but I don't wanna debate that this evening, so. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Just that I think a greenhouse gas emission discussion would best be served with scientists, and they basically said, yes, there's a greenhouse gas emission for the entire planet, so.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, we had a motion and a second, I think, didn't we?
Yes.
Then I will ask for a show of hands of all those in favor. That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Alrighty, twenty-two dash four-zero-three dash zero-one, order to extend the ordinance establishing a moratorium on mineral extraction, lagooning, and/or creation of ponds for an additional one hundred and eighty days to allow time for the Mineral Extraction Task Force to complete its work on development of land use regulations governing this activity. This is a first reading, which was left off your agenda, so it was, we had that discussion at agenda meeting, and it was, we didn't, I think the attorney said we have to, this is a first reading, so it will be on our next agenda for a vote. Is there anyone that has any questions that were raised, or any concerns? Nope, this is the first reading. Okay, seeing none, then we will move on. Twenty-two dash four-zero-four dash zero-one, order to accept a bid from Casco Bay Ford for two twenty-twenty-three Ford Police Interceptor utility all-wheel-drive vehicles. Who's gonna present on this this evening?
Yeah, I believe we are supposed to have DC Small on Zoom with us tonight, so can you check on that?
Maybe he just got called away to an emergency.
All right, so I'll pick it up then. So pursuant to the capital improvement program for the city for this year, we anticipated to go out to bid for two replacement Ford Police Interceptors. Those are the Explorers that you see around in our community that we switched to a number of years ago. They continue to be very efficient and proficient vehicles for utilization. One of the elements that I like about them best is their all-wheel drive. Our officers have an easier time getting in and out of the seats, because they sit at the appropriate height, and they have more room for the extensive equipment belts that they wear, as well as their vests. They have proved to be a reliable vehicle within our fleet. And because of the favorable work that took place a number of years ago, where we no longer hold back the frontline vehicles that were taken out and retiring, so we incur the high cost of those for putting those into the administrative fleet, and thus the lease program that we have referred to earlier this evening, in eliminating that, we get substantially higher trading values for these vehicles now by trading two per year, as opposed to the former three, getting higher trade values. There were two bids in there, Casco Bay Ford, as well as McGovern. When you do the comparison on that, the Casco Bay Ford was the prevailing bid. We've worked with them for a number of years, we're familiar with them as far as an entity to work with. They had a lower net cost to the city at just over twenty-one thousand dollars per unit, as opposed to the other bid was approximately twenty-three thousand dollars per unit net trade.
Do I have a motion to approve? Councilor Brink?
So moved.
Is there a second? Councilor Termath?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Steve, can I just ask, I mean, I thought I read it in there that these things are not actually on...
Oh, no.
They're not there yet, right?
I should've stated, this also, the bid also falls within, what we had anticipated for our capital program. So it falls within budget there. No, they are not on the lot. So please note the, I know I highlighted that in here.
Well, I thought I saw that, that it was like, they're not on the lot, so that means, this isn't gonna be one of those things where a year from now, they're gonna tell us that they didn't have them, right?
Well, likely, they won't tell us that they have them, but the time to receive them is very much up in the air. Very much up in the air. They, you know, I know I highlighted that here in the packet. They made that legal disclosure in there, as in, we're probably waiting six to eight months to see these. So about the time we get ready to bid for the next years, these will show up and come into the fleet.
That's kinda what I figured, but I just thought everybody out there should, don't expect to see it out there too, anytime soon. So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion by the council? Seeing none, I will say, a show of hands, all those in favor of the motion, that is a unanimous vote. Okay, I will read the next motion that you do not have on your agendas. Twenty-two dash four-zero-six dash zero-one, order to authorize pedestrian use of sidewalks and shoulders along Main Street, Route one-oh-nine, and Heidi Street, between seven forty-five AM and eight forty-five AM on Saturday, September third, twenty-twenty-two, to accommodate participants in the Randall's Run-Walk for the Jim 5K race with police presence for traffic control. Do I have a motion to approve, Councilor Stackpole?
We approve.
Is there a second, Councilor Brink?
Second.
A motion and a second. Steve, do you wanna just talk about this?
Yeah, so in conference with our police chief, who has worked with the requesting party on this, this request, this is actually, would be the second year of using the same route. And what we found last year honoring this request was that the police department provided pedestrian crossing, well, pedestrian participant crossings there in front of the Nassau Center, so they could access the opposite side of the road, for which they do the out and back on that opposite side of the road. So I wanna be specifically clear that this is not a road closure, but is, but you are actually authorizing them to use the pedestrian ways along the road to accomplish this road race element, and that our department will participate in the safe crossing of the individuals across Main Street there in Springville.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions or comments? Then by a show of hands, all those in favor? That is a unanimous vote, motion passes. Okay, council member comments. Councilor Termath?
Not at this time.
Councilor Brink?
Not at this time, thank you.
Councilor Martel?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Is there a game on or something at home? Sorry, maybe the Yankees are playing. Oh, sorry. Councilor Hanselman?
I have two things. One, I just wanted to share my excitement when I was walking around the pond, number-one pond, and noticed that the dog wastebag stations had been installed.
Oh.
So, yeah, I just thought that was exciting.
Where is it around the pond, can you tell us that?
It's closest to the dog park.
Excellent.
I really try, and I hope folks continue to try to bring their own bags, but in the event you forget one or run out, it's just handy to have. So thank you to Solid Waste Subcommittee for making that happen. And then also just note that August twentieth, there is a Chamber of Commerce Brew Fest back. I know there's a lot of excitement around that event, two to six PM at Pilot's Cove, and I believe you can purchase tickets online. And there's also, not to steal Morris Thunder, but there is a Mainers 5K that day. So you can run a five on the airport, which is actually really exciting. I wish I could run a 5K right now, but so you can do a run and drink beer and not feel guilty. So thank you.
That was, I think Deputy Chief Small is back. Too late. Okay, Councilor Stackpole?
No comments this evening.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'm just gonna add on to what Ann said. What I find is interesting, that the 5K is being sponsored by the Mainers and Convenient MD, one of our new businesses in town, and the Brew Fest is being sponsored at the airport by Eldridge Lumber, another new business coming into town. So I think that's great to see their immediate involvement in our community for two things that seem to match up well with either location or what they do, health.
Thank you, that's excellent. And I don't have any further comments this evening. I will then go to future agenda items. And I wanna preface this by saying something. Now that we have subcommittees that meet once a month, and they meet the week after the first meeting of the month, you will not necessarily see items that you have suggested, either on subcommittee or on a council agenda. It's just too truncated a time period for them to adequately look into all of those things. So I just wanted you to know that I have, I'm going to be looking at all of those requests, and we will make sure that eventually they will be on subcommittees, but they may not be, and don't, they may not be on the next subcommittee. They may have to wait an extra month for them to do that. And we will prioritize them. But I just wanted you to understand that. I think that we made some staff people very anxious, thinking that they had to get a lot of stuff together between a Tuesday night council meeting and the next Tuesday subcommittee meeting. Didn't really allow enough time for them to get that stuff to Larissa by Thursday, so that the agenda... Wednesday, excuse me, by Wednesday. And so they were freaking out, and I said, we never, and I personally never intended for that to happen. And now that they're on a four-day week as well, we, I hope that there won't be any adjustments in that regard, but I just wanted everyone to know, just because you say it tonight doesn't mean it's gonna be on the next subcommittee meeting. It will be eventually. But I will prioritize them. So with that preface, so Councilor Termath, any future agenda items?
Yes, real quickly, I would just like to get an update on the crosswalks, when they're gonna be completed on the painting. I know we did the arrows, we did the center line, we did the fog line, but the crosswalks are still not touched. You can see example one right at Washington Street and one-oh-nine. It's completely faded, and I'd like to just get an update on that.
Thank you. Councilor Brink?
I am so excited about the Ray's Grant. For years, I have heard from Maura that one of the ways we would improve our city is to improve our downtown, and it is finally going to happen. So if there's some way along the way, as this is developing, if we could have just, maybe just a two-minute report on what's happening, what are the next steps, what to look forward to, what some of our citizens might see happening. So it might not really be an agenda item, but kind of a minor, simple report.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Martel?
Just as some positive feedback, I know we changed the hours of City Hall, and saw some positive feedback from some people on that, so that's good.
Coming in at seven-thirty or five-ten?
I would be at 7:30.
Able to get there after work, before they close, but...
Any agenda items?
Yeah. I'd still like to see sort of a plan map for road paving and maybe rough timelines for those.
Mean for, well, I think that we actually, well, we can do that.
Does that come out yet?
Make sure that it's online.
I did that for a while ago, so just want to make sure that hasn't...
Yes. We're meeting again this week to go, now that we know we have the Raze Grant, so we had, we had two proposals, you know, one with the Raze Grant, one without the Raze Grant. Now that we know we have the Raze Grant, we're going to refine that scenario for you and also bring it, bring into account the road projects that are being completed this year, so we know that we've got the proper assessment of that. Because as you see now, they're out doing a whole series of light capital, light capital paving, that the council allowed us to bring that out of. The 2021-22 operational budget preserved those, that sum of money, that's what you're seeing going on High Street and other areas right now. And the crosswalk, well, as referenced, was not done because of the paving program. See, the other crosswalks, I believe, have been completed. I'll check with Director Hill. The contractor had anywhere from one to four crews per night out there, you know, working on those markings, so.
So, eventually, we will have an update on what they're planning to do, but it'll take them a while to get that together. Counsel Hanselman?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Counsel Stackpole?
Nothing, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
No, I think I've got everything, except I did have someone ask me about why Dump Road versus North Avenue. That was one of the questions tonight, so I think the road, like, why did we pave Dump Road and not North Avenue? Because North Avenue is so bad.
She meant High Street, I mean, we're high, we're school, and, you know, at the beginning of the, they call it the Dump Road. You mean, we're...
Well, there was something...
A road that goes to the dump.
Yeah, that's in such horrible condition. Anyway, North Avenue, I think the bigger, I think the bigger question is...
Boston Street.
I think the bigger question is, why not North Avenue, since North Avenue is, it really is horrendous. I avoid going down it, and it's in my neighborhood.
And I think at some point...
So, I think the road conversation is going to be good.
Yeah, we need to have the road conversation because it would be nice to see what the plan is, where in the priority list some of those side streets that aren't really side streets if you live on them.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And I personally think that that would be a great discussion for us to have, and it